Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the City of Kingman Council on Tuesday, September 21, 2021, at 5:00 p.m. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Miles.
Present.
Vice Mayor Watkins.
Here.
Councilmember Mello.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson is excused this evening. Councilmember Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Zoom, on Zoom, by Pastor Tony Henry of Kingman Nazarene Church. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you for the opportunity to pray with you this way. Let's pray. My only Father, I thank you so much for this evening, and I thank you for all of our leaders who have gathered for this meeting, both in person and on Zoom. Father, I just thank you for their willingness to serve the citizens of Kingman today. Father, I ask that your discretion be with them, that your Spirit would just fill them with the knowledge that the citizens of Kingman have placed in them to make the right decisions regarding all of us. Father, we ask you to be with our city and our state as we still fight this COVID thing, that you would be with all of those affected. Father, we thank you for the way that you love us and the opportunities that you give us in this great country. Father, we ask you to be with all of our first responders and our small business leaders, our schools, and all those involved in our community, Father, that they would just have your heart for each other. Father, we thank you so much for all that you do for us and the way that you lead and guide us. I ask for your discernment over those who will make decisions. I ask for your guidance in their conversations. We just thank you so much for all that you do for us. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first order of business this evening concerns appointments to the Clean City Commission. There are two vacancies on the Clean City Commission due to the resignation of Vice Chair Ferry and Commissioner Hamilton. At this time, four applications have been received from the following individuals: Randy Carpenter, Michael Case, Evelyn Izaguirre, and Armenda Patz. Hope I pronounced that correctly. Staff recommends council appoint two candidates to serve on the Clean City Commission with one term expiring December of 2022 and one term expiring December of 2023. First of all, I'd like to thank Vice Chair Ferry and Commissioner Hamilton for their service on this commission. And then I would like to ask if any of the individuals who have applied are present tonight. Okay, we have, we have two. Okay, Randy Carpenter, would you like to come up and, and address the council, say a few words?
Thank you for having me.
Excuse me, if you could pull the microphone. We have people on Zoom, and they won't be able to hear you.
Sure, okay. Well, thank you, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. This is the first time I've ever done anything like this, so my wife and I retired. We moved here two and a half years ago, and I just want to, I love Kingman. My dad had purchased 40 acres 35-plus years ago out off of Blake Ranch Road, and it got us familiar with the area. And the timing was right. We made our move, and we got out here. And I have the time. I want to serve. I love this town, and I love the history. And I, I'm the creative type, and I don't know, I just want to plug in and, and serve however, wherever I could serve, even if it's not on the Clean City Commission, maybe another commission. And I was a certified arborist for 35-plus years and did landscape maintenance and all that kind of stuff. So I have talents that I could help out. I just want to get plugged in and serve for Kingman.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I, Michael Case?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor Watkins, council members and staff. My name is Michael Case. I'm a resident of Kingman. I purchased a house here about three years ago, and I've just recently retired about a year ago from the Kingman Post Office. Prior to that, I was honorably discharged from the Marine Corps for four and a half years. And my time with the post office left me very little time to volunteer for anything else and other activities, because I know you probably see carriers out there 9:00, 10:00 o'clock at night, and that's not uncommon. So now that I'm retired, I want to do my part and try to help the city and, and work with the businesses, the townspeople, and do whatever I can. My time in the Marine Corps, though, did teach me to have pride, responsibility, work well with others, and have each other's backs. You know, I know I don't have a very big resume right now, but I'm working on trying to build that up. So I just thank you for your time, for everything that y'all do, and for considering my application.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your applications. Anyone else? Okay, who's our Clean City liaison? I imagine it must be Councilor Nelson, who is excused this evening. Okay, are there any comments or discussion that any councilors would like before we vote? We all have a ballot, and I think the intent, if City Clerk Meredith will confirm, is that we're going to each choose two and then submit these to you, and you'll tell us.
That is correct.
Okay. Let's go ahead and do that.
Mayor, if I may, I, I was pleased to see four applicants for two positions on the commission. So for the other two commissioners, I would encourage you to hop on another commission. So I, I love it when we have more volunteers than we have space for, so please do consider that.
Thank you. That's an excellent point.
Okay, so we have five votes for Randy Carpenter, Councilmember Staley, Vice Mayor Watkins, Mayor Miles, Councilmember Walker, Councilmember Samley. We have six votes for Michael Case, Councilmember Staley, Vice Mayor Watkins, Councilmember Mello, Mayor Miles, Councilmember Walker, and Councilmember Samley, and one vote for Evelyn Izaguirre, from Councilmember Mello.
Thank you, Clerk Meredith.
So we would just need a motion for the approval.
We need a motion for the approval.
And just one, because they both have, there are two different types of terms, you need to make sure the motion.
Thank you. Okay, let us first have a motion for the term ending December 2022.
I make a motion that we accept the application of Randy Carpenter for the term that is expiring December of 2022.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to appoint Randy Carpenter to the Clean City Commission with a term expiring December of 2022. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. We also have a, oh, could I now have a motion to appoint Michael Case to one term expiring December 2023?
So moved.
I second that.
You have a motion and a second to appoint Randy Case. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Well, gentlemen, thank you so much for your application, and we appreciate your, your service so much, and we wish you the very best on the Clean City Commission. Thank you. And again, I will reiterate Counselor Samley's comments for those that were not appointed this evening, and for anyone interested in serving the city, please consider other commissions, because we always are looking for people who want to work with us and volunteer. We'll move on now to the proclamations. The first one is for Fire Prevention Week, and I think that Chief Rhodes is here. Yes, and he will be receiving this, this proclamation. And it reads, "Whereas the City of Kingman is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our community, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and whereas the City of Kingman residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas the 2021 Fire Prevention Week theme, learn the sounds of fire safety effectively serves to remind us it is important to learn the different sounds of smoke and carbon monoxide alarms. Therefore, now I, Jen Miles, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Kingman, do hereby proclaim the week of October 3rd through 9th, 2021, as Fire Prevention Week, and urge all citizens of the City of Kingman to learn the sounds of fire safety for Fire Prevention Week 2021, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the City of Kingman Fire Department. And witness, therefore, I here to sign my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Kingman, done today, September 21st, 2021." I'd like to present this to you, Chief Rhodes, and if any of the councilors would like to join me.
A few members of our team here, obviously, that really carry this out on a daily basis.
Please go ahead.
It'd be unfair, unfair.
Unfair.
Oscar Lopez, Mike Schmidt, Almana Blough, Sean Ostrom, really the tip of, they do this every day. We're very blessed to have a team that will do preventing instead of reacting to fires. So thank you.
It's critical. Thank you. I hope everyone will learn the sounds of fire.
Hi, Mayor, can I get a picture, but can I have, like, the shorter people step down?
Oh, yeah, Oscar.
Chief, Mayor, Suzanne, cherish on this side. Yeah, let cherish down. There we go. Much, okay, look at me first, and then look at you.
For the next topic or recognition, we are going to have a life-saving award and recognition. And for this recognition tonight, I'm going to ask Chief Rhodes to lead the presentation.
Well, obviously, a life-saving award is always a big thing. It's an opportunity to make a difference in somebody's lives, which we always talk about. Anytime those, those bells go off in our stations, it's somebody's worst day. And this particular day, it'd have to be a member of our own team. So I'll let Tina kind of walk through that, and then I'll take it from there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. So it was Thursday night, August 12th, about 5:30, and Brittany Coleman, Brittany, who is one of our customer service representatives on my team and is an absolute rock star, recognized that one of our team members wasn't acting quite right, and not really out of character, just not quite right. And so she approached this team member, whose name is Deanna, and just asked, "Are you okay? You know, is everything all right? Do you need to call someone to go home? Do you want me to take you home?" And Deanna responded, "No, no, I'm fine." So we closed our office at 6:00. And so as 6:00 was approaching and Brittany was closing up for the night, she thought, "You know what? I'm just going to check one more time and see if Deanna's okay." And so she goes to Deanna's workspace and says, "Hey, Deanna, you know, are you okay?" And the rest of us then hear Brittany's voice. It was calm, but it was loud, and it was definitely of urgency, saying, "Deanna's collapsed. Somebody call 911." And so we're an office full of women, and we react a little bit differently to those words than our male counterparts do. And so we got a little bit panicky. Several of us called 911, and the rest of us went and hovered over Deanna's workspace, where we witnessed Brittany checking Deanna's vitals. Did, was she breathing? No. Did she have a pulse? No. And so Brittany immediately started performing CPR, and did that until the emergency responders arrived. Now, what was remarkable about that, that short period of time was that there was a lot of chaos going on. There were several of us running back and forth, talking out loud, trying to get emergency contact information. There were, we had dispatchers on speakerphone. We had several of us crying. We had several of us pacing back and forth. But no matter what, it was like Brittany built a wall between her and Deanna, and she focused solely on taking care of Deanna. And the emergency responders arrived, and they were able to get Deanna into a stable condition and rush her to the hospital. And I am very happy to report tonight that Deanna is home and recovering, and amen to that. But I don't know that that would have been the case if Brittany would have recognized that one of her team members at 5:30 wasn't acting right, if she didn't check on her at 6:00, and if she didn't react so quickly when Deanna collapsed. Our team has been forever grateful and continues to just say thank you so much to Brittany. And what's so interesting is that Brittany's response is of complete humility, and she says, "It was nothing. Anyone would have done that in this situation." And I don't agree with that. I think that anyone would have wanted to. I think that anyone would have hoped that they could have responded that way, but I do not think that anyone would have been able to rise to the occasion that Brittany did. So on behalf of my whole team, and I know Deanna's family, we just want to say thank you so much for saving, helping save Deanna's life. I would definitely be remiss if I did not recognize the dispatch team and the emergency responders team that the city employs. They are absolutely outstanding, and we are so fortunate to have them in our community. Thank you.
Well, I feel like Tina kind of took some of my thunder there, so. That's what she does, what she does. But, but the emotion is apparent today, right? It's, so let me run through a couple things. 1804, we've called. 1805, we're coming. We're coming from this station. 1806, we're on scene. So good turnaround time from, but I guarantee that time seemed forever when you're waiting. I can guarantee that. But in the midst of that was also Sean Ostrom, who had just left work over in Admin, who was driving home. And we close at 6:00, and he hears that call. There's no guarantee that this station is staffed or they're maybe on another call. So he turns around, and then in the middle of this, he starts thinking, "I'm not supposed to jump calls." But Jake said it's okay to jump calls if it's the right reason, but I don't know if I should. Then I'll do this, I'll do this. So eventually, he shows up, and he takes over compressions. And then our, our team kicks in, obviously, and it's a, and it's a mix. If you guys will step in here, please. I got an engineer who was riding up as captain that day, paramedic Keith Walker. I got a two-year, who started August 1st, two years ago, employee, Quinton Lopez. I got a part-time firefighter, paramedic, who's also firefighter, paramedic over in Bullhead, and Justin Miller, and obviously Sean Ostrom. So without this team of responders, we don't have this event. And this is a rare event. Let's, let's be very honest. Our cardiac survivability, you heard, you see it in my goals that I talk about every month, it's, it's all those things we do. That's why we put on CPR classes every month for city employees. That's why we're out there. We talk about apparatus placement and all those things that go into that. That'll come up in budget time. We've already talked about that. But in reality, this isn't ER. This isn't a TV show, because by the time she was leaving here, she was talking. That doesn't happen. One in a million. Now, we can talk about divine intervention and a bunch of other things, which has to play a role, but, but without this team, without Brittany jumping in and doing one of the most crucial things, we're not celebrating tonight, and Deanna's not home in good condition and going to return back to work. So I'd like to recognize all these guys. I did a little certificate, and I'd love to have photos with everybody, but thank you to these guys, quick action, and Brittany jumping into action, which is not an ordinary action. It is extraordinary, and we have to, we have to pay homage to that.
Chief, I know we'll be glad to join you, but I just want to take a moment.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm sure on behalf of the council and probably everyone in this room and city, we want to express our gratitude to Brittany and to the wonderful first responders and to you. And I think that this will be held in our hearts, and so I'd like to thank them and just.
So as I think, as I heard the rules earlier.
Spar fish.
Short people in front. Where's, where's Oscar?
Can you just look at me first?
Yes.
Sorry, muffled camera.
You guys can get a better spot if you want.
I think we're good. I think all the cameras are good.
Well, those are the moments we cherish. Okay, I'll give them just a minute to clear the room. Well deserved, yes. Well deserved. So there's some celebration in the hall. Our next order of business is the Call to the Public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at another time. There are no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group, and they should be limited to three minutes. Now, this is a hybrid meeting. There were three options for public participation, either in person, which we do have one person registered, call-ins, or written comments. Clerk Meredith, were there any that people wishing to call in or to submit written comments?
Mayor Miles, we did not receive anybody that wished to register to call in this evening. We did receive two written comments for Items 6A and B that were emailed to council earlier today, and we do have one person signed up to speak this evening in chambers.
Thank you. And that person is Ms. Becky Fawson. And so Becky, if you could come up, representing the Kingman Chamber.
Hi, Becky from the chamber. I just wanted to take a minute to say thank you. I addressed a concern to Gary Kellogg a few weeks ago about the stoplight at Andy Devine and Fourth Street, where it blinks red on Fourth Street and it blinks yellow on Andy Devine. And, you know, I'm around downtown all the time, and I see people that think it's a four-way stop, and, especially the ones on Fourth Street, and they would go thinking Andy Devine was going to stop, and they didn't. And I see it a lot. So anyway, I just told Gary, I said, "You know, there seems there should be a sign up there that alerts people cross-traffic doesn't stop." And the very next day, I drove by, and there was a sign.
Wow.
So I just wanted to say thank you for taking my concern and addressing it so quickly.
Thank you for letting us know, and thank you to Director Kellogg for taking such quick action on that. Wonderful. Okay, next order of business is the Consent Agenda, and all matters listed here are considered routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless the item is removed from the consent agenda and to be considered separately. Are there any items that a counselor would like to remove for consideration?
Mayor Miles, I'd like to remove O, please.
O. The golf cart lease, okay. Any others?
Yeah. Mayor Miles, I would like to remove E and J.
Sorry. E and J. Okay, then I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda with the omission of Items E, J, and O.
So moved.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay? Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Okay, Item E, Resolution Number 5376, Mojave Community College Facility Use Agreement. The city owns and operates a fire station, number two, located at 1605 Harrison Avenue in Kingman. It is a staffed and operating, emergency operations fire station. It's staffed and operational 24 hours a day. The city is desirous of permitting MCC to utilize certain equipment and portions of this facility for educational purposes. The purpose of this agreement is to provide a facility for the MCC Fire Academy. Staff recommends approval. Counselor Mello?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, it's actually E and F. I just wanted to say that I love this partnering, that we're doing this, working together in our community, and that maybe we can grow our own firemen. So I just love this idea, and thank you to Chief Rhodes. I don't have any questions, Chief Rhodes, but do you want to elaborate anything about this program?
Opportunity to turn down the microphone? I don't think so. So, so this is, yeah, this is exactly that. The MCC always runs their firefighter one and two academy several years, and, and since we've got our facilities, it's, it's been held in Bullhead several years. And, and so last spring it was here, this spring it was such a success. All of our firefighters, our instructors and that, and we have a few others from the county that come in as well. But that's exactly it. Between that and the Explorer Program, that's exactly the focus is, is growing our own. And, and we've hired several of those. We actually have a process, firefighter hiring process tomorrow, in that three of the four finalists are all graduates from either.
the four finalists are all graduates from either Explorer Program or MCC. So, that's exactly what it's about. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and tomorrow night, when the, um, celebration occurs for the Hundred Years, people can see that training room that has been revised. So, that's really, that's a segue into that invitation. Okay, did you say that you really wanted a different one than J?
No, um, so do we need to vote on that, then?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
So, I make a motion that we, um, approve Resolution Number 5376.
Have a second.
I'll, I'll second it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor can have it. Okay, but motion in a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Okay.
And then for J, I have a conflict of interest, so I'm just gonna recuse myself from the vote.
Oh, okay. This is a release of deed restrictions on parcel, uh, is that two NI or one? Paragraphs two, three, four, and seven contain certain conditions, and these conditions have been completed by I-Call Staffing LLC. Staff recommends authorizing the mayor to sign the release of conditions. Any comments or just, oh, go ahead. Prove it.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Item O is the golf cart fleet lease purchase. The replacement of our fleet of 70 golf carts and a beverage cart was approved in the current budget for a lease purcha, purchase for $50,000. Club Car through Omnia Partners Cooperative Planning, uh, purchasing, uh, is providing golf carts at a very competitive pricing with our fleet trade-in. The City of Kingman is registered with the Omnia Partners Cooperative Purchasing Program. Golf course staff reviewed specifications and pricing, and recommended of the club car, golf carts in the amount of $49,938, tax included, per year. Staff recommends approval. Counselor Sembly.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the reason that I pulled this was just for clarification to the public, so, come on up, Mike. I, I just had two questions, um, and, uh, just wanted to, uh, I'm, I'm excited that the golf cart, uh, course is getting carts. Is this an entire turnover of the fleet?
Yes, it is. Um, and the fleet that we have now is eight years old, and we had a five-year lease on that. So, we've had it free and clear for three years, and the golf cart, golf cart revenue is about $140,000 a year, ground numbers, and the fleet price is under $50,000, so...
Okay. And then, uh, so you said that you've had this fleet for eight years?
Yes.
I see in the backup documentation, um, is this, this is a six-year, so...
This is a five-year.
Will be a five-year, okay. So, it will turn over in five years? We're not gonna wait eight years again?
Well, we're gonna try to. That's our goal, is try to...
Okay.
And, and ours are getting a little, when, when they get to the age they're at now, they start having a little costly breakdowns and things like that, where it's not cost-effective to keep, continue keeping them, so...
Sure. And, and that's what I wanted, the clarification, that we're gonna turn this, turn it over again at that timeframe. Because the value is, is, it becomes, you know, less and less, the more you, you know, extend those years out, correct? And becomes more and more of a maintenance headache, correct?
That's exactly right, yep.
Yeah, so, okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Would you like to go ahead and...
I will. I'd like to make a motion, uh, to approve the golf cart fleet lease purchase.
Have a second.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second to approve the purchase, or the lease purchase. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Okay, no old business tonight, so we have new business. The first is a request for variance for overhead power at 415 South Second Street. Staff has received a request from Deborah Sasser to waive Section 9-5 of the Kingman Municipal Code that requires the undergrounding of utility lines. The property in question is located at 415 South Second Street. There is an overhead electric line in Second Street with a pole near the northeast property owner. The Municipal Utility Commission heard the request on 8/26/21, and voted 6-0 to approve the variance. Staff recommends approval. Manager Foggan, did you have anything to add before the presentation?
Nope, Phil's got you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Alred. Go ahead.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and Council. Um, just to, I guess, summarize, uh, again, what this is. This is a, a request to waive a portion of our, our city code for overhead, uh, well, that, that would require underground, uh, undergrounding of lines. We require the lines for secondary, and for the service drops to be, uh, underground. This prod, this, um, property is located at the intersection of Second Street and Gold Road Avenue. Um, there was, uh, there was a structure on here previously that was demolished, and, um, the reason why this came up is after the, the property was demolished, it requires a, a new drop, um, from the, from the utility company. And so, um, normally, when, when you get a new service, we would require that to be underground. Um, just for some information, there's a, an existing power pole, uh, right there at the northeast corner of the, the, the property there in yellow. So, there's a, there's a pole relatively close to the property, and as the mayor mentioned, this was heard by the Min, Min, Municipal Utility Commission. On the 26th, they voted 6-0 to approve the variance, and, um, I think that is our recommendation as well. So, um, I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any, and I know the applicant is here as well.
Thank you. And the applicant has signed up to speak, but before that, do the, does anyone have questions for Phil? No? Okay, thank you. Uh, Deborah Sasser is the applicant, and if you'd like to come up and speak.
I don't know the etiquette, so, uh, thank you for having me here and, and letting me talk. Um, I'm here really more to answer any questions you may have on it. I did buy the, the property in October last year with full intention of remodeling it and moving in, but not only, I was gonna have to do a lot of remodeling, because it was 80 years old, but, um, I was willing to do that until I found out the dry wood termite damage was so extensive that 75% of the lumber would've had to be redone also. So, that's why I had to get a demo permit and downwit. Uh, but I have full intentions of putting another house on it and living there. This is, this is, this is where I wanna live. Um, and so, um, when we were doing the dirt work, um, the, the land has so much cleechy at that point, and I'd have, I'd have a 20-foot setback from Second Street, plus it'd go about 15 feet to the middle of the, the house. So, that's about, um, 30, 35 feet of underground, uh, over 27 inches deep, because that's what's required by, uh, Unisource, uh, and probably the code. Um, and I will already have double the investment in a property that doesn't attract that value by the time I have a house on there. So, even though maybe the cost of doing the underground is somewhere around $5,000 to dig the trench, where it's zero to just bring it, the, the line to the actual main, uh, I'd, I'd rather not go through that expense, if that's okay. Um, if, if there were at least 50% of the houses around there that did have underground, I wouldn't be even here, you know, because I, I wouldn't want an overhead when everybody else had underground. But, there's one out of the whole community down there that is underground, so, that's, that's why I'm requesting this.
Thank you, Ms. Sasser. Are there any questions, comments from the council? Thank you very much for the presentation...
Thank you for hearing me.
...and for submitting the pictures. Is there any discussion by council? Then I would entertain a motion regarding, um, 6A.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and appro, uh, second to approve, uh, the request for variance for overhead power at 415 South Second Street. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Second order of new business is a request for a sewer variance for Pasadena Estates. Staff has requ, received a request from Travelling Pennington, representing Mojave Land Holdings, to waive the requirement to extend sewer to new subdivisions. The property in question is located at the southwest corner of Pasadena Avenue and Sage Street, and comprises three separate properties. This development has had several previous actions, both by the Municipal Utility Commission and the city council. The nearest sewer to the property is a 12-inch main approximately 2650 feet north of the section, along the section line of Se, Section 16. The applicant is requesting the variance due to the length required to extend the sewer to the development. The sewer policy statement in the regulation states that all new subdivisions within the city water service boundary shall provide for the discharge of domestic and other liquid waste in the municipal sewage system. It further states that no new subdivisions inside or outside the city limits will be granted water service unless they are served by a central sewage collection system. Staff has reviewed the request and feels that the current regulations, uh, should be followed. This request was heard by the Municipal Utility Commission at their, uh, August 26/21 meeting, and they voted 6-0 to approve the variance. Staff recommends that the request for the sewer, sewer variance be denied. Manager Foggan, or Mr. Alred?
Uh, yeah, uh, Phil's gonna, I think, walk you through just a couple of things, and we'll leave it up to, uh, you folks to have a conversation about it.
Okay. We have a speaker signed up also.
All right, so, um, this is a request for a, a sewer variance, um, the, to waive the requirement to extend sewer to new subdivisions. Um, as it was mentioned before, the property is located at the southwest corner of Pasadena and Sage Street. So, up here on the, on the screen, the area in yellow is the, the area in question. Properties current, currently zoned R140, uh, for single-family residences. Um, properties proposed to be developed into a subdivision called Pasadena Estates. It'll create 30 residential lots with a minimum size of, minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet. Um, the, the, as mentioned before, the, the development has had several previous actions, both by the Municipal Utility Commission and the city council. Um, in March 2016, the applicant requested a sewer variance, um, from the Municipal Utility Commission, um, and at that time, the variance was denied 5-0. And then later on, on, uh, in September of 2016, the applicant requested water service, which was approved with the condition, um, that water and sewer be extended to the, um, to the property, and that was approved 5-0 by the commission. The, um, later, um, well, so the, the conditions of that approval were that water and sewer mains be extended, um, to, to serve all properties within this subdivision in accordance with the, the utility regulations, and that fire hydrants be located and installed in accordance with the, the regulations. Later on, the city council, um, in October of 2016, heard the request for water service approval, with, and it was approved with the same conditions that, that the Municipal Utility Commission, um, recommended. And then later, a preliminary plat showing the site was, um, showing the site being served by sewer was also approved by the city council in May of 2017. And, um, in the, in the write-up, I attached the resolution, um, for, for that action. So, as, um, the applicant was looking at different options to serve, um, this, uh, development with sewer, I'm aware of three different options that were discussed. Um, the, there's an option to run it along the Sage Street alignment, down to the corner of their property, so it'd be, um, and I, hopefully everyone can see the cursor there. Um, that, that would be the most direct route, but it would also require probably some additional easement from the state land department, um, to, to achieve that. Second option, there's a, um, there's an existing sewer here at the intersection of Apache and Airfield, and there's a manhole right here, so they could extend the sewer in Apache over to their development. And then, um, those, the, the first two options, I think there was some concern about depth, um, that the sewer would be pretty deep. Um, but, um, generally, we would want it relatively deep, so it could serve, um, properties further south. Last option that was looked at was, um, running sewer, and, and it's not shown on this exhibit, um, but it, there, there would be a connection up on Central, north of Airfield, and it would come down Central, go east on Airfield, and then down Yavapai Drive to the development. That's the longest, um, route, but it would probably be a little less depth that, that, uh, that they'd have to contend with. So, um, I just wanted to also show, so when, when we look at these sort of things, we're, we're looking at the long-term. Um, we, we had a sewer master plan put, uh, put together a few years ago, and our goal is to serve every, every property within the city, whether they're currently connected or not. Um, and, and we look at that for various reasons. Um, you know, septics fail, or there might be some other reason for us to, to wanna connect. So, when, when we're, when we're doing our master planning, we're looking at a lot of different options, and, um, we're looking long-term. And in this area, you can see this dashed red line, um, it, and it goes, um, within the vicinity of, of this project that, that we're looking at right now. So, somewhere in this area, we're, we're contemplating a sewer main that eventually will serve some of these areas in the Walapai foothills and, and some other areas. Again, talking long-term, um, we're, we're not connecting anybody right now, right? But, um, when, when we're looking at this, we're, we're looking long-term into the future. As stated before, the sewer policy statement, um, in our regulation states that all new subdivisions, um, need to provide, uh, sewer into our collection system. I think it's important to note that this requirement exists both within the city limits and outside of the city limits. So, um, areas within our water service boundary, uh, in the unincorporated, um, Mojave County, um, this, this rule would also be applied as well to areas outside of the city limits. Um, as a little bit of a history, the, the current policy as it stands now was adopted in 2011. Before that, the, the, the original policy was adopted in, um, 1995. The difference between what was adopted in 1995 and what we have now was in, um, in 2000, 2011, the council at the time, um, removed the require, or, removed an exception for lots 20,000 square feet or larger. So, before 2011, lots 2,000 square feet or, or larger were able to get an exemption to this requirement. At the time, in 2011, um, there, there was a lot of discussion about our sewer plants coming online, and there was a lot of discussion about, um, reuse of wastewater and, and water conservation. And I think that played, uh, a role in the decision that was made in 2011 to require all subdivisions, regardless of the lot size, to, to connect. So, um, staff has, has looked at this, this request, and we feel it's important to, to follow our, our, our regulations. Um, it's important for us to try to be consistent as, as much as possible, so we don't set any sort of precedent. Um, so, um, in, in addition with, you know, our concerns with the precedent, we would have concerns about, um, consistent application, the capture, treatment, and reuse of, of wastewater, and how important that is to the city goals. Rob Owen wasn't able to be here tonight, but, um, he, he had mentioned to me that he wanted to, to point out that this policy helps us with our long-term strategy for water sustainability. Um, 'cause we're able to take, um, wastewater and treat it to a point where we can recharge it into the... it into the aquifer. And what we do is a lot better than what septic systems can do. And so that's our feeling. Like it was said earlier, this was heard by the Municipal Utility Commission, and they approved, they voted 6-0 to approve the variance. And so with that, it was a lot of information, but if you have any questions, I can do my best to answer them.
Are there questions?
Mayor?
Please go ahead.
I do have a question about the MUC meeting. I'm just curious, what was the discussion? When you have a 6-0 vote, and then you have staff completely the opposite version, what was the discussion?
Unfortunately, I was not there. I was ill, but I did watch it. And I think there was a lot of discussion about whether or not this property could be developed without sewer, or the cost that it would create to develop the property, and I think there was a lot of discussion about that. I believe Engel Homes had indicated that they likely would walk away from the property if they didn't get the variance. So I think that played into some of the consideration. I think the commission just wanted to ensure that development could happen. And I think Councilman Walker was there. I don't know if you-
I was there. There was a lot of discussion, and I'll be honest with you, before they took the vote, I didn't think it'd be a 6-0. I figured it'd be maybe a 5-1. I mean, but it was, they were leaning, most of the commissioners. There was a little discussion. I didn't know how the one guy was gonna vote, but I mean, at the end, I mean, I personally, I think it makes sense, because the cost just to get to the site and to stick that cost on 30 lots for developer, it's hard to swallow that. Now, if they were to cut those lots and, you know, even half, I don't know if they could justify that cost. You know, if they go to a third, the neighbors aren't gonna allow those small lots in that area. I mean, think about that. Most of those lots in that area are all one-acre lots, so they're not gonna want third-acre lots. I mean, in my opinion, I think that would be a whole nother battle we'll see coming through planning and zoning. And I think that's what the commission saw, was they'd rather see this thing built out than just sit there as an empty field for another 30 or 40 years.
I did have some other questions. So you talked about Apache, the future plans to bring sewer down. What is that slated for? Is there a timeframe on that?
So are you talking about the master plan, what I've got up now? There is no timeframe for it. This is, like I said, a document to guide us in our planning for the future. We don't have it programmed in our Capitol improvement project yet.
So everybody out there in that area, or the majority of the home sites, are on septic?
Currently, yes, like out here in the Walpuy foothills estates, everyone's on septic.
Okay.
There's probably a few one-offs here along Sage, but west of Sage, most everyone's on sewer.
Okay. And then, what is the lifespan of a septic? Because as I understand it, as septic's fail in that area, if it's available, they will have to connect. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, yeah, if it's available.
If it's available.
I don't have a good number on the lifespan of a septic system. I would probably say somewhere, I don't know, I'm probably guessing, but probably 30 to 40 years, maybe. But it really just depends if it's maintained, what gets put into it, and it depends on a lot of different things. Some people never do any maintenance on them, and they fail a lot sooner. They get clogged. In other cases, people do a little bit more, and they last longer.
Right. Well, and I guess that's kind of my point, that most everybody's on septic. I don't know how long that area has been established, just off the top of my head. So, you know, you're looking, if we were to go in the route of accepting the variance, you would be looking at another 30 years down. And who knows how long the master plan to extend? So I kind of agree with Councilman Walker that, you know, it could sit vacant for quite some time. If it becomes available in the Apache area, will there be, let's say, let's say the developer puts the sewer in. Is there any opportunity for payback as those septic's fail?
Yes. So if they-
Again, if, you know, when they fail. I don't know how long that subdivision has been established, or that area has been established.
So I must have closed my window, but basically, they could run it up Apache, and you can kind of see the cursor right here. And so if that was in, and if there were any septic failures, or if there was anything that would require a new building permit, like if they did an accessory structure or something like that, that would trigger the requirement for them to connect into the sewer.
Okay.
And so, yes, the developer could put a payback in place. Those paybacks have a 20-year life on them.
Okay. So again, not very feasible if septic's last 30 to 40 years. So, and, you know, I kind of go with the density, you know? There's, it's not real high density out there. So those are my questions. I appreciate it very much. Helped me a lot.
Any other questions?
Mayor, yeah.
Vice Mayor?
Can we revisit? You made some comments that were accepted back in, from 2016, from Municipal Utilities Commission, and this plat, are they, in other words, if I understand right, please correct me, that it was accepted with the fact that they would have to do water, to get water service, they also had to do sewer service. Is that correct?
Correct.
So they agreed to it back in 2016?
They, yeah, so they approved it with the condition that sewer and water be extended to the subdivision.
Same applicant?
Correct.
Okay. But now, they want water, but they don't want sewer, so they're wanting to change.
Correct.
Okay. But real estate is more robust now than it was back in 2016.
Sure.
Okay. I just wanted to bring that to light. Thank you.
Mayor, please go ahead. I had a conversation with the owner and all these concerns, and I would be with Cherish and Keith in going forward with this, approving the variance. Table in it today and having staff add the conditions of adding sidewalks and curbs in that area, and the owner was agreeable to that, so that's an option. We would table it, add those conditions, have staff add those conditions, and bring it back to vote on. Then, it's kind of a compromise, and the variance would be approved.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Anyone on Zoom?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. The first question, I think, might be for Mr. Foggan. You know, I'm looking at this, and it says that this developer has already asked for a sewer variance, and it was denied. And then there's two items subsequently that are brought forward that are approved based on the fact that it would have sewer. So I'm just wondering why this item is even coming back before the council. It's already been denied in the past, and then other items were approved based on sewer. Do we just allow developers to keep coming in every couple of years and trying to get variances on our building standards?
Well, that was directed towards me, but I was not aware of the 2016 approvals and requirements, so I would turn that to Phil.
So there's nothing in our regulations or ordinances that would prohibit somebody from coming back and making another request. And so when someone wants to make a request, we'll take it, and we'll take it through the process.
Mr. Foggan, I would ask you to bring something forward to the council where we can make a change to that, because that doesn't seem right at all, that these past councils have heard this issue, they've denied it, or they've approved based on sewer, and then now we're gonna undo their work. It's a, I think it's a waste of everyone's time, and I think it's a slap in the face of the people that have served prior to us.
I think that was a question.
Was that, I don't know that that was, was that a question, Counselor Staley, or it was just a comment?
No, I'm asking that that be brought forward to-
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
She's asking for future action.
Yeah, and we certainly can look at that and what the best practices are. You know, I know it seems like yesterday, 2016, it's actually been five years, but it's definitely something that we can look into and see how it's handled around the state by other communities.
Thank you. My other question is, when was this property purchased?
It actually hasn't been purchased. There's an, I believe that the developer currently holds an option to purchase, is that right?
Anything else, Counselor Staley?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Miles?
Yes.
I do have a question to Mayor Staley, or Mayor, I just made you Mayor, Jamie. Counselor Staley's point. I tend to agree. I don't want to undo work of prior councils, but I would, I see that the applicant is here, and I would like to know, you know, why they're bringing it forward. Is it just to change a council decision because it's a new council? I would like to know, is there cause to bring this back? Because I, you know, in looking at my backup information, I do see the resolutions, and so I would like to know why you would want to unwind information that was already decided upon, so, if I may.
Well, I'm going to have him come up, and also, there's some other comments that were submitted, but I, do you have any other comments for Mr. Allred? I just wanted, before we go to the applicant-
Yeah, no doubt at this time.
Where you can ask your question.
Thank you.
I would like to revisit those years again. You say in 2016, that was the original decision point for this property?
Correct.
And then what, the follow-up actions were in what years where this was again affirmed?
So it was initially heard by the commission in March of 2016, and it was denied by a vote of 5-0. At the time, the applicant chose not to go to the City Council to contest it further. And then in September of 2016, it went back to the commission, and it was approved 5-0 with conditions which I laid out.
Okay.
And then in 2016, sorry, in October of 2016, the City Council approved the water service for the subdivision with the same conditions. And then the site went through the preliminary plat process, and in May of 2017, it was approved by the City Council, and the plat showed water and sewer within the subdivision.
Okay, I just wanted to get those dates clear in my mind, and in the public mind. So that is several, that's both commission actions and several council actions taken prior to this new request.
Correct.
And as I understand it, at that meeting, at the MUC meeting, there was really not a discussion of anything that's changed, other than coming back to the council again.
Correct. Yeah, the development hasn't changed from when it was originally looked at before.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Allred.
Mayor, I have a couple of questions of him.
Certainly, go ahead.
You gave us three options of which way they could come.
Yes.
Two of the three are in asphalt, one is in dirt. Is that correct?
Correct.
And what are the footages of option one?
So these are, these are rough footages. I thought I had it. Okay. So the Sage alignment is somewhere in the 2650 range, and that's just to the corner of the property. It'd probably have to go a little bit further to get to like one of the entrance roads or something. And that would be the one that would be in all dirt. The second option was the Apache to Airfield. That's about 2,700 and change. And the last one that I mentioned that was on Central, that's about 4,400 feet.
I think right there's the determining factor. That's a lot of footage in asphalt. I mean, the dirt one's shorter, but that's going through Ada, or excuse me, Arizona Trust Land?
Yeah, more than likely, an easement or something would have to be obtained.
How easy is that?
It takes a little while.
Okay. All right. And then, if they do go in the asphalt, are they gonna be required to chip seal the whole?
You know, it depends on the trench, but I'd have to see the plans, but normally, we wouldn't. If the trench isn't very, isn't very wide, we wouldn't require it.
Okay. Because I've paid a lot of heat over other projects going on that are over the square footage that are done by the enterprise funds that we're not doing. Now, are we gonna make a private individual follow that guideline?
So I've been working for the city for 11 years, and I'm unaware of any that we've required anybody to chip seal a trench.
I think this is the new MAG thing that's coming in, and everyone's getting excited about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
But just to point out, you know, we are doing it in the county. The county's asking us to chip seal for the diagonal wash interceptor, so we are chip sealing on some of our Capitol projects.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. And these are one-acre lots?
A little less.
A little less, but probably-
About .9 something.
But they're Pasadena Estates, but they're going to be more higher-end homes, it sounds like.
Yeah, larger lots, yeah.
Larger lots. Okay. I don't have any other questions right now. Any others? Hearing none, thank you very much. And we do have a speaker signed up, Travon Pennington. We also have comments that were submitted from Carl Taylor to be put into the public record, and I want to make sure that all councils had a chance to see that. This person is, lives adjacent to the project, and says that the neighbors had input when the project was conditionally approved in 2016, making sure that the ordinance was enforced, requiring improvements, including sewer. So this person certainly wants those conditions to be honored. That is, I don't think there were any other written comments, but we do have the speaker here tonight, Travon Pennington, representing Mojave Land Holdings.
Mayor, Council, thank you. I'd like to give just a real short version of the history of like how we arrived here. Carl and Donna Wright, I think Carl has passed away. Donna, I spoke with her yesterday. Back before I became an employee at Engel Homes, Engel Homes approached the Wright family and negotiated an option, put some option money up on that property, and has been working on that property ever since that point. The origin, the early on meetings, I think, when you ask why we arrived here today, that's the process of land development, right? We go in, you identify what your preliminary plat looks like, your map that you want to build, you make sure it fits your zoning, the required zoning, and then you take that and you start turning it into a subdivision. And part of that is you identify early on, water's real important in sewer, and where you're gonna get it. So in that, very early on in the process, we realized sewer was a long ways away. So I could imagine these early meetings, coming to MUC and asking for an exemption to the sewer requirements because it was well over a half mile to get sewer. So I think that's like a natural cause of an effect, like you're in the development business, you come. So and then that no turned into, okay, we move forward, and we develop our preliminary plat, right? We design that showing sewer, because that, we were denied using septic tanks. So I think, you know, that early approval of a preliminary plat in 2017 showing sewer and water, that was our intentions. Since I was, probably in 2018 I came about, and since I've been at Engel Homes, I've priced this project out three different times. For- this project out three different times, for sewer, right? To run this sewer, and every time it came up against, we came up against what I call like an economic ceiling on what lots like this are worth versus what we would be in them. And so, you know, the first time I priced it out, the economy's getting better, right? So the best thing to do is just wait. Like, give it a couple of years, we continue to pay option money, ask Donna to be generous with it, and, you know, allow us to continue to move this project forward. And here recently, we've come to the realization is that if we have to do sewer on this project, it's not going to work, and we're going to have to give this property back to Donna Wright. So I think to answer some of that question of how, why we're back here, that's just part of this process. It's, land development isn't a fun, easy, methodical business. It's sometimes messy. So I'd like to share that. I'm happy to answer any questions. The, the location of the sewer that we've, like, the closest sewer doesn't work. And so the sewer manhole that we've arrived at that would most best suit this project is approximately 3,500 feet away at intersection, option three that Phil laid out. So again, this was a process, and it wasn't like just anybody jumped to any conclusions or try. We're here asking for an exemption to the sewer requirement, because this subdivision would cost too much to build if we had to run the sewer. We've considered, one of the considerations was if we could do a rezone, right? We've considered half acres, considered third acres. And Carl Taylor, that letter that you just wrote, he was the former planning and zoning director at, for Mojave County for many, many years. He lives across the street from this project, and I don't, by the tone of that letter, I don't think Carl would let a rezone slide right under, across the street from his house. So we kind of weighed that out, right? That most likely a rezone would not be successful, all of us would not enjoy that process. So again, we've priced it out three times, and I'm here hat in hand. But I will go back and say that the city passed a rule that said all subdivisions, regardless of size, require sewer service. Since that rule has, was passed, there's been no one acre subdivisions built. So I think we're running out of one acre lot subdivisions. But we haven't reached that point where the market says it's also worth bringing sewer over a half mile to service that project. And I believe that, that MUC and that ability to take your grievance and ask for a variance, that's the very essence of why that commission exists. You guys approved the variance right before me, so that's the essence. So I don't think we should get frustrated that somebody uses that process and arrives back at a city council meeting for that reason. I think that's really the essence of it. So, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Go ahead, Counselor.
Travon, so 30 homes would be built in that, 30 homes, okay.
Yep. And to the point, I mean, if there was an option where you wanted to vote on this tonight and not have to, our intentions are to put, build this subdivision with sidewalks inside this subdivision to service these 30 homes. So, you know, that was a concern, that's our intentions. I'm here publicly making that statement, so.
Thank you, Mr. Travon, Mr. Pennington.
Mayor?
Yes, Manager Foggan.
When you're done, I would like an opportunity.
Okay, I think I just had one question for Phil before, and then the floor is yours. I want to go to the subject of sidewalks, curbs, and gutters, which is my understanding is required in new subdivisions. Is that correct?
Correct.
So why is that an issue here?
Well, I'm not sure what happened when this was heard, but the pre-plat for the onsite streets show, do not show curb gutter or sidewalk, but there was a requirement to do curb gutter and sidewalk for the offsite streets, so that would be Louise, Sage, and Pasadena. So I wasn't directly involved in that one, so I'm not sure how that one got to where it got and how it was approved without curb gutter and sidewalk, but that's currently the onsite. That's correct, right, Rich?
That's correct.
So the onsite streets don't show curb gutter or sidewalk.
And that, the clause that we, that the council created saying that subdivision, older approved subdivisions have to come up to current standards, I guess that doesn't apply, it's not old enough.
Again, I'm not sure how it got to where it got. In my opinion, it should have had the curb gutter and sidewalk as a requirement of the preliminary plat.
The city has a great need to enforce its own standards. That just, and to not put that on high-end homes, I mean, we see it all over the place in the current developments in that part of the city, and it's not a good thing, in my opinion. But thank you. Okay, Manager Foggan.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the conversations. I just feel a need to make sure that, you know, that we've had quite a bit of conversation with the team, and just, you know, not trying to be fair, or I mean unfair, we try to be fair and consistent with all that we do, and just wanted to encourage the council to look at the rules and understand why, why they are what they are. And, you know, in, yes, it's been pointed out that there are a great deal of homes that have been built in this area in the past without sewer, but making the same mistake over and over again doesn't make a lot of sense either. And I would say that there's three options, and I think it's worth pointing out, that we know that the state lands folks take a long time to make decisions, but had this been pursued with state lands back in 2017, the dirt route could have been obtained, and pretty cheap sewer, as far as installing sewer, the shortest length in dirt could have been done back working with state lands. I don't think it would have taken them four years to do, but even if it had, it would be ready to go. And so we just want to echo what Phil has shared with you, and the desire to have homes inside our community connected to sewer. The result of that is that we're not worried about failing septics. It does increase our ability to take the water and put it back into the aquifer, and it just makes for a cleaner, nicer community as far as livability. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Manager Foggan.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I just, I had a question for Manager Foggan. My comment about failing sewers was purely just to offer payback to the developer, so that's where my comment was going, just to clarify. The other, the question I have, though, is, is there any opportunity to share the cost since we have this in our master plan development? I understand those funds haven't been identified, but is there any opportunity to share the costs with the developer, so it's not such a financial burden, the city gets to follow the rules, and we get a development with 30 homes?
Yeah, we, we do sewer, mainline sewer, we do not do sewer extensions to subdivisions.
Any other comments? I have a few comments. I, first of all, will concur that going back on and revisiting this after it has been to commissions and councils several times, without really new information other than it costs a lot, is not compelling to me. And because most project planners foresee escalating cost and/or, in this case, could have made mitigating actions years ago to avoid this situation. And I really have heard so many discussions in this council about the need for sewer connections in this city, because we have been injured by the lack of sewer connections that have happened because of all the lots that have been developed with septic, and we've put the burden of paying for our septic system, I mean, our sewer system, on the people, on fewer people because of this lack of extending sewer to the homes that happen to have larger lots and happen to be higher-end homes. And I think that we've all decided as a council in the past that that practice needs to stop, that we need to require these sewers and these sewer connections, if nothing else, to start an equity for the, all of the people who are in our sewer system, and also for water sustainability. And the comment about putting this charge into the ground rather than taking it through our good plants, processing it, and injecting it into the ground in a way that will help our aquifer, that is a good idea that I will uphold, because I really believe that's what we need to be doing. And, you know, I have an old, older property, and it is on a septic system. And every day, I'm sitting there going, what am I going to, be careful, don't do too many laundry loads, don't put that down. It has constraints that, to me, aren't remarkably good. But, and so for new houses going in with the intention to sell these nice homes to people, I think we owe it to them and to the community in large to keep this connected to the sewer and to the past council decisions, given that, you can probably tell I'm going to not be in favor of this. Any other comments?
I have a couple, Mayor.
Certainly.
I don't know how to say this in the right way, but government versus private, when you're in business, is two different things. Government really doesn't care what it costs. In private industry, if it doesn't make dollars and cents, you don't do it. And I think the cost of this sewer extension doesn't make sense for the one acre lots. I mean, if they tried to go smaller lots, they might be able to make that work, but it won't survive a planning and zoning issue. I don't, I don't feel it will. That's one thing. You know, if they were smaller than one acres, I would probably push for the sewer. You know, we have MUC for a reason, they heard it, you know, they voted 6-0 to go ahead and let this variance go through. Things do change, you know, costs have shot through the roof. Right now, I don't even know, if they ordered pipe to put in the ground today, it'd probably be six or eight months to get it. You know, that's a big factor. You know, it meets the state standard still. I believe one acre lots, we can still do septic. I just, I would rather see this development get built and have that land have nice homes in it than let it sit empty for another, who knows how many years? Is where I stand with this thing.
Thank you. Yeah, anything else? You know, I, I understand your point about government. I was fortunate to work as a project engineer for a private sector corporation, and even to this afternoon, I was meeting with the plant managers of several of our construction companies out at the airport, and, and I listened to what they are saying about supply chains and other things. I'm very aware that we're all in, we are all, whether we're city, government, or private, impacted by the supply chain disruptions and by the escalating cost. We have grave concerns about that for some of the projects the city, you know, is looking at. So that is, that's across the board. Everyone is facing that. I also know that in designing projects, as I did, the time comes, sometimes when you say, okay, this isn't feasible right now, sometimes it becomes feasible when maybe the market changes. Sometimes you just don't do it. But we certainly want this, we want development of reasonable, with reasonable standards, and of course, our biggest need right now is affordable housing. We've all talked about that. But nevertheless, these types of houses are lovely to have in Kingman, but I still stand by my dedication to our standards that have been worked on for so many years, and to the people who have many times talked with me about their dissatisfaction that not everybody is paying for the sewer, and also even some people who are on septic, who, who would prefer to be on sewer. But mostly, it's because of all these reasons that we've discussed. The fact that it's, it's consistent with how this whole plot has been developed, the fact that we have policies in place to try to address water and good communities, and that's, that's it. Anything else?
I'm in, Mayor.
Amen.
You know, I was led to believe at one time, too, that these were one acre lots, but unfortunately, they fall short of that one acre lot. And so, in fact, someone had mentioned to me that ADQ requires that they can allow septics on one acre lots or bigger, but these are not one acre lots. They're shy of it, they're point nine, you know, so that's a technicality right there. I mean, it's a rule. Go ahead, Travon. Oh, well, I'm sorry, Mayor.
You go right ahead, Vice Mayor.
I think that's a misinterpretation or a misunderstanding of that rule.
Well, that's what someone told me from your organization.
Yeah, I mean, right in the city of Kingman, we have R140 zoning, right? So we developed, that's the minimum size lot. I believe there is a state law that kicks in at half acres, and Keith, you know that rule or not?
I believe it is half acres.
So I believe the state restricts septic tanks, there's all kinds of exemptions to that.
Okay.
With anything half acre or less is, has to have septic tanks, and there are exemptions and allowances for things for higher than that.
Sure. I appreciate the clarification. But really, the underlying factor comes back to play, and Manager Foggan brought it out, is that back in 2016, they accepted the conditions, and if they would have started right back on then in 2017, they could have chose the dirt lot. It would have been cheaper, building materials would have been cheaper. All these things come into play. And then secondly, these are going to be luxury homes, luxury lots, people are going to buy them. They're going to pay the, I think they're going to, if you build them, they will come. That's what I think.
I think so, too. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anything else?
Mayor, if I could, please?
Please go ahead, Counselor Staley.
Thank you. You know, I just wanted to first point out that it isn't the responsibility of the city to make a project pencil out or to make it more profitable for a builder. And that's what we're talking about here, is we're talking about waiving our, our rules that we make everyone else live up to, except for very certain circumstances, like the previous item. But we ask people to build to these minimum standards, because it's what's best for the community, and that's what the city is supposed to be doing, that's what this council is supposed to be doing, is what's best for the whole city. And that is getting more people on sewer, so that the bills will be lowered for the rest of the citizens, getting more money, or, excuse me, getting more water back into the aquifer through our injection well, that's what's best. And then applying these rules fairly is the best thing. And I can tell you, I was on the council in 2017 that approved that preliminary plat, and I can say with 100% certainty that we wouldn't have approved it if it was septic tanks instead of sewer, because we, at the time, and I hope still are, dedicated to getting people hooked up under the sewer. The new houses need to go on there for all the reasons that I previously mentioned. So again, I don't think it's right that we're, we're coming back. So again, I don't think it's right that we're, we're coming back here and revisiting this. You know, if anything, you know, if, if they're not going to live up to the assurances that there would be sewer and that's how they got water, maybe, you know, then the water should be taken away too because they, they did not live up to that previous promise. And I know things change, but it, this isn't right. It's, we're talking about 30 homes that will all be on septic, that will someday have to bear the cost of, of hooking up to that sewer system. And so for me, I just, I am, I'm not in favor of this. I, I don't think it's right. If we want to table it and talk about it again in two weeks, that's fine, but I'll still feel the same way.
Thank you, Counselor Staley. If there's no further discussion, I'd accept a motion.
I do have a couple other points I'd like to make. I do agree with Councilmember Staley about undoing previous work, you know, until we got our pockets. I was unaware that there was previous action taken. But I do also want to say, you know, it's not the business of the city to tell the developer when the time is right to build. So, you know, I just wanted to make that, that certain too. I'm conflicted on this. I look at the density and I look at the, the lot sizes and, you know, if it was higher density, I'd be more in favor. I'm conflicted, so, thank you.
Mayor, I have one more thing.
Please go ahead.
City Attorney Cooper can correct me if I'm wrong, but one council can't, we as a council cannot hold a future council hostage to our decisions we make. They can change them. So previous councils, what they've done, I mean, we can change it.
I think that is true, but I turn.
That's a generally true statement. And because we don't have any methodology, as we're talking about bringing, able to bring this back, if we had some ordinance that talked about not being able to bring this back unless the time has expired or there was a substantial change, then correct. But if, if it was within that timeframe or if it was within those parameters, then yeah, you'd be bound by it.
So that is, while correct, I too was on the council in 2017 and I've been through a lot of discussions on sewers and, and on all of these subjects. And I truly believe that it was a sound, these are sound policies that have been put into place. And, and I still believe that they are appropriate for the city as a whole. And I do not personally think that anyone is trying to tell developers when to develop. I just think we are trying to uphold our standards unless there is some substantive reason to change. And I don't see that. Mr. Pennington.
Travon, with developer. I, I would just ask if, maybe, maybe one of the benefits of allowing the variance is we build this subdivision and those fees get recirculated in the way that development recirculates fees through our community and contributes to our city.
Thank you, Mr. Travington.
Okay. Thanks for listening.
Okay. I'm now ready to entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the variance.
Is there a second?
All second.
There is a motion and a second to approve the variance, and I'd like a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Miles?
No.
Vice Mayor Watkins?
No.
Councilmember Mello?
Yes.
Councilmember Samley?
Because of the density and the just under one acre, I'm, that's, I'm, I'm a yes vote.
Councilmember Scott Staley?
No.
Councilmember Walker?
Yes.
It is, it is a tie vote.
It fails.
We have a tie vote and it fails. And I guess we do not need any other motions. Is that correct, Manager Foggan?
I'm sorry, Mayor.
I said, we don't need any further motions, do we? Since that one failed?
Carl, I don't think so.
Not unless you want another motion here.
I don't. So we'll move on. The next order of business is department reports, and the first is fleet management diagnosed, diagnostic.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Plonty, go ahead, Mayor.
Yes. Before, we've, I've invited Jack Plonty to walk you through, we've had a fleet management system in place now for going on well over a year. And we thought, because it's part of our strategic plan to have a fleet that is economical and is well maintained and that the, that gets the work done, we thought that it was probably appropriate to let you know of how that program is going as well as to let you know kind of what our future plans look like as, as we continue to work on the strategic plan. So Jack, you want to walk the council through your presentation?
Sure. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come up here and talk to you guys. So as Mr. Foggan said, we've been looking at our fleet management program. So we've actually been using this system for actually better than 20 years. And over the last couple of years, we've been trying to improve the analytics that we receive back. It's, the program's actually pretty robust and it'll, it'll do a lot of work, you know, to help us, assist us and direct us in some of the decision making that we use. Our, our fleet, Bill, sitting back here behind me, him, his team and Donna, one of our admins, have done a lot of work over the last two years trying to bring the system up into good standing. Improve the amount or the accuracy of the data that's coming in so we can improve our analytics and what we're spitting out of this program. We still have a lot of work to do. This isn't doom and gloom or none of that. But we, we've been working through that, that system and through changes and trying to bring ourselves into better alignment with best practices. And we've got to the point, partly because of time, you know, sometimes when you're dealing with the, the day to day, trying to make those big improvements that we need to make, they're very laborious, they take a lot of time and effort. And I firmly believe that we have the, the skill set in our team to do so, but we reached out because we needed that help to make a move quick. I am fairly impatient and I like things to happen and like tomorrow, I've tried all kinds of things to improve my, my patience, but I'm into getting things done. And so we reached out to Mercury Associates. So I have Paul Loria on with us and he's going to go through some of the findings. So what we've done is just a high level assessment. Most of these are not anything that were a surprise to us that came out of the other side of this report, but it also netted some actions. And then we sat down and we evaluated each of those future actions for what we need to do and prioritize those. And so we're making a roadmap for how we're going to move forward. And that, that covers a broad base of what we're doing in fleet management, from fleet replacement, utilization, actual operation within our shop. We've made a pretty big jump and we went from flip phones and paper and now we're into laptops and smartphones and tablets and, you know, a lot of technology that help us do what we do. And so Bill and his team manage a big portion of our fleet and that covers everything from maybe a small utility trailer to heavy equipment and fire apparatus. And they manage a lot of that work in-house. There's some things we can't do that we, we sublet out. So with that, I'll introduce Paul Loria from, from Mercury. He'll go through some of the findings and what we're looking at, and then I'll come as a follow-up with that and answer any questions that pop up. Paul, are you with us?
I am. Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me all right?
I can hear you good, Paul.
Great. Well, thanks, Madam Mayor and members of the council for giving me the opportunity to share with you the key findings and recommendations of this high level review of the city of Kingman's fleet management practices. Very briefly, I'm the president of Mercury Associates. We're a fleet management consulting firm. We're the largest company of our type in North America. We work primarily with federal, state and local government clients to help them improve the management and reduce the costs of their fleets. We work with about 50 to 60 unique clients a year. And our clients have fleets that range in size from a few hundred vehicles to tens of thousands of vehicles. I do have a short presentation that summarizes the key findings of our, of our report. So if you bear with me for a minute while I get that up on the screen, we can run through that. I, I think that this was shared with the council beforehand, but I don't know if any of you had an opportunity to review it. So I just want to hit some of the high points. I'll talk briefly about the goal and the approach to the project, what we looked at, what was the scope of our review. Tell you a little bit about the city's fleet. We developed a number of specific finds and recommend, recommended actions. I'm not going to walk through all of those tonight, I'll summarize them. I will spend a little bit of time talking about what we refer to as prioritized strategic improvement recommendations. So I think those, those provide a pretty good sense of where we think the opportunities for both business process improvement and cost reduction exist. This was, as Jack mentioned, a high level assessment, what we call a diagnostic review, not a deep dive into data, not a deep dive into business processes. It did include a two and a half day onsite visit by myself and by one of our managers who was a long time public sector fleet manager before becoming a consultant. We, the approach that we use involves looking at readily available quantitative data and documentary material, documentary materials, things like position descriptions, standard operating procedures, commonly used inspection and record forms. We interviewed all of the employees of the fleet services division, obviously spent time talking to Jack, the Assistant Public Works Director, and the city's de facto fleet manager. We also wanted to get the perspective of some of the key users of fleet resources and services in the city. So we talked to representatives of the police department, some of the public works divisions, inspected the maintenance facility. Yes?
So we're getting a breakup on your voice. Not exactly sure what's happening, but just know that we're getting like every other sentence.
Okay. Me, so I'm actually using earbuds. Is that any better if I hold the microphone up near my mouth?
Yeah, we, we're hearing you fine. It may be the connection.
Okay. I apologize. I'll, I'll, feel free to interrupt if you're not catching more than 50% of what I'm saying and I'll either repeat myself or try to go slower. Can you hear me any better now than you could a minute ago?
We, we've got you right now.
Okay, good. All right. Well, fortunately, this is not a very long presentation, so I apologize. One of the challenges of doing web-based meetings. The scope of the review encompassed all the key activities associated with managing a fleet of vehicles. We look overall, what we call fleet governance, the overall approach that the city is using to manage fleet resources and deliver services to fleet users, asset allocation and utilization management. In other words, how do you, how does the city determine what types, quantities? Yes?
Paul, sorry, something's wrong with the connection. And, and there's just no way that we're going to get your message this way.
Okay. I apologize for that.
Paul, this is Jack. I'm going to go ahead and Annie's going to put up the slides for me and I'll run through them. If you would, we'll try and see if we can get through some questions at the end of it and see if we can go that route. Can you go back one? Yeah, go to the next one. All right. Sorry about the delay there. Go ahead and open up the whole, the whole slide for me. All right. So as Paul was going into, our goal was to do a high level approach of our fleet management program. As he indicated, both business practices and from an operational standpoint. How can we make it operate as efficiently and cheaply and as safely as we can? And while doing so, do it as cheaply and as efficiently and, you know, most economically as we can. So the approach, Paul and his team came out initially, they actually did a data request, which was significant, decent amount of information. It was difficult because in the past, our data capture and, you know, what we were actually obtaining was not, not sufficient, quite honestly. So it took a decent amount of time. Donna and Bill spent a significant amount of time pulling together all those records and all the information to send over to Paul and his team for the initial assessment. And then when Paul and his team came to, to Public Works, they spent a couple of days and they did a, a lot of interviews and there was a lot of questions. So there was interviews and questions that they had for all of us involved in fleet, myself, Bill, his team. And then they reached out to all of our customers, everybody in the city that operates under us. And, and they brought in those teams and they questioned, you know, what are the things that they worked through, what are the challenges they see, what, you know, how does the shop work for you? And so with that, they did a inspection of our facility, watched what we do, looked at our programs, looked at our fleet management program, and then went back and finalized the report. Can you go ahead and switch, Annie? So just as it says in the scope, looking at fleet governance, how do we, how do we manage it? Or what policies, procedures and practices do we use to, to manage our fleet? The asset allocation and utilization management, that's going to be a big one moving forward. So right off the bat, we've been fortunate to get into a program to where we can make additional replacements. Still, we have some work to do in, in the number and the total dollar amount of asset replacements we need to do in a fiscal year or in a year. Unfortunately, although it's been great for us to be able to purchase additional vehicles, due to current circumstances, it's been very difficult to obtain those. Some of our lead times have been over a year. We're looking at some right now, they're, they're estimating, you know, six months or more. And we're not getting great updates as with the rest of the nation. So we're working through that. Utilization is going to be a big one. Part of that is, okay, you own an asset, how often do you use it? Does it sit the majority of the time? You're going to see some of those that, that occur, you know, a bomb squad trailer or truck. Hopefully you don't have to use it, but you really need to have it. So it's probably going to not have a lot of utilization versus maybe an admin or a, you know, another vehicle that sits and you're not utilizing it and it's, it's losing money. You know, its value is depreciating as it sits there. So those are some of the things we're going to look at. Asset acquisition and disposal, that'll be another big one. Critiquing what we have, we've gone through the agreements we have with our current providers and trying to improve that. And then disposal as well. Again, Donna and Bill worked, worked pretty diligently and, and we had a pretty significant number of vehicles and pieces of equipment that were due for disposal. And that's netted almost $300,000 with, with them disposing of that. So as our fleet age improves and we're actually disposing of things in a reasonable amount of time, that should improve. Fleet fueling, that's a big one. We spend roughly 300, or I'm sorry, 300, $750,000 a year on fuel. It's a significant investment for the city that quite honestly, we burn. And so, you know, environmentally and financially, we want those vehicles to be as efficient as we can to minimize the, the dependence or not dependence, but you know, carbon, carbon fossil fuel. Sorry, getting ahead of myself, mumbling. To minimize the amount of fuel we need to use. Fleet replacement, again, that's back to, to how much of our fleet replaced. You hear me talk a lot about asphalt, obviously, and you're probably thankful tonight's not one of those. But we have a known replacement value of our fleet. We have a, a predicted age where we should be replacing those and we want to further refine that. And then we can come and try and balance out and minimize the peaks and valleys in our budgeting process by saying, look, we need to replace X number of dollars of assets per year. And then that will improve our availability, that'll improve our downtime, one and the same, you know, improve the appearance of our fleet, reduce maintenance. It just has a lot of benefits for managing our fleet well. Fleet management resources, again, how we're structured, you know, how our fleet operates. And, and when I say how we're structured, that's all the way from, you know, Rob's position, Ron's position, I'm sorry, Mr. Foggan's position, all the way down to, you know, our service techs and the people that are actually putting their hands on the wrenches. So we want to look at that whole structure and make sure that, that's in alignment with what our fleet makeup is and what the best practices would dictate. And then, you know, all these items are really to manage our, our cost of our, our fleet. We spend roughly $2 million a year in budget for maintenance and repair. We operate some large pieces and very maintenance intensive pieces of equipment. Part of that is due to the age of our fleet, but some of them, even if they're brand Part of that is due to the age of our fleet, but some of them, even if they're brand new, solid waste trucks, side loaders require an immense amount of time. So we'll, we'll capture all those things and, and try to further refine our, our practices. Next slide, Annie. So overview of the fleet, kind of talked about it. We have 402 assets. Again, that could be everything from a trailer up to a fire apparatus, a loader, dump trucks and everything in between. Talked about the estimated replacement cost, $28 million were the rolling assets that we have out in the field right now. So, you know, it's not, not what we have in asphalt, but it's still a pretty significant number. If we had to go replace our fleet tomorrow, i- it would make a big impact. Median asset age, that's one of the challenges we really have. That 8.4 doesn't reflect some of the, the hot heavy, high intensity requirements we have on some of our fleet that are 30 years old. Council member Watkins is probably pretty, I'd say painfully aware of what it takes to maintain a, a side loader. And we do, we have some of those that are, that are over 30 years old. And so they're, they've well exceeded their recommended life cycles. Median annual average hours unknown. So this is part of the data capture that we weren't getting very well. And so we have replaced our fuel island, you know, that's been actually in place for just a little over a year now. The program that runs in that, the software, when we go to get fuel, you type in your mileage, it captures the truck or the unit number, the driver, a lot of information. So one of the keys is going to be utilizing that information. So the first was to be able to capture that. Our system before wasn't, was unable. We're still having some challenges with getting accurate readings because it still depends on the driver to punch in accurate mileages, but we're going to be making some changes to help narrow that in and, and improve that. We talked a little bit about the fleet services divisions, division. So we've got six FTEs, full time employees. Two of those are new positions. One of those hopefully will be advertising in the near future. And we're working on the second job description so we can get that up and moving. So that's going to really help our, our operation. We have about a $2 million annual operating budget and that covers everything we do. Fuel excluded, that's budgeted by each of the departments and divisions. So when you're seeing $2 million, that doesn't necessarily reflect the overall cost of our, our fleet. Next slide, Annie. So business maturity and practice, or I'm sorry, business practice and resource maturity rating. So one to five, it's, it's pretty straightforward. One is reactive. We fix problems as they come up. Two, we have a basic understanding. We're trying to capture those items before they really become a problem. Three, we're proficient and then it goes, you know, all the way up to best in class. Our goal is to improve all our numbers, no matter where they're at. And so Paul, to their credit, was not here to pat us on the back or tell us what we're doing right. They were here to tell us the areas that we could really hone in on and improve our fleet. So next slide, Annie. So this is just an overview. This is a, a really condensed version of the report that Paul and his team have done. So fleet governance, how we manage, we're 2.5. We have some action items and we'll cover a handful of those. There was a pretty large number, but we're working on a secondary project that'll start moving those, those items forward. I, I won't go through all of these. You guys have seen them in your packet and I'd be happy to answer questions on them. Some of those are obviously better and some of those we got some great opportunities to make improvement. Next slide, Annie. So this is where we were talking about prioritizing our next steps. So the, one of the first steps that we want to do is prioritize or develop a plan for rightsizing and modernizing our fleet. And so some of these steps are going to seem maybe out of sequence, or maybe you're not a geek for this sort of stuff like I can be. But we want to make sure when we start moving our fleet forward and we're capturing data that we're doing it on the right size fleet. So we're going to look at, you know, what the makeup of our fleet is, how many we have of reserve units that are backups in case something breaks down. Right now, that's, that's fairly significant because we have such a high age rating of our fleet. And, and that doesn't seem like a lot when you're looking at 8.4 years. I know that's like a 10th of the age of most of the stuff I drive personally. But when you're looking at the service life that it operates in, it makes a big difference. You know, between fill-ups, we're tracking 25 to 30,000 miles of our fleet. So call it around weekly, we're, we're running about 30,000 miles for vehicles that are coming to get fuel. So you add that up over the year and it's a pretty significant number across 400 units. The second step that we're going to do is to further refine our fleet management system. And so part of that, we've talked about the fuel system, integrating our fuel system. So what'll happen, what we're trying to get to is when you come get fuel, you type in your mileage. There's a data grab that comes from our fleet management system or from our fuel management system into our fleet management system. And it will actually trigger, we can go in, we can put set points in for when specific services are required. Keep in mind, I'm getting a little in the weeds. We have different levels. So one is an oil change, a safety inspection, pretty basic in and out. And then we get all the way to the point where we're doing, you know, transmission services, differential services. We're doing, you know, essentially a tune-up to try and improve or, or maintain our fuel economy. So we're going to continue to narrow that down. The, the team has already started the, the transition into a paperless shop. So I said, we went from paper to, to laptops. So now each one of our techs, our mechanics has a laptop with them and that, that provides them a lot of things. One, everything has gone electronic. All our service manuals and technical data is accessed at that point. But in the fleet management program, that's where we input all the information. The parts we use, the cost on them, how many hours we spend for each one of those phases of work. And so that really helps us capture data that we're going to use to further analyze. And, and when I, when I say analyze, at some point in time, our goal is to be able to make predictive replacements. So use a fire apparatus. That's, that's a pretty important piece of equipment. We know every year and a half that we have those units come in because the batteries failed and we've got to replace a battery. Well, we know that, we can start setting those triggers to where we can predict those failures and try and get ahead of them. This is also going to help us track warranty work, return work. And it's really going to help us not only evaluate our fleet, but our operation. How we as fleet managers operate, what we do all the way into our techs and our mechanics. So the, the data that comes out of this is going to be pretty significant and, and useful. So the, the third item, the develop and implement a fleet replacement management program, we talked about that a little bit. Again, we're trying to take out those peaks and valleys. We want to, to make our budgeting process as flat as we can. So I don't come to you guys and say, hey, surprise, I need, you know, $20 million to replace a, a large portion of our fleet. Again, we want to make predictive replacements of those. That's going to drive a couple of things. One, it's going to lower or decrease the amount of fluctuation in our budgets. But also if we're replacing these assets in a reasonable amount of time, we're going to get more money for them. And that's going to help us drive our fleet program and our replacements forward. Big one, and really right now it's a, it's a big portion is our parts. So it talks about developing our, a request for proposal for a parts procurement and supply services. So there's a lot of options. A lot of your municipal fleets and counties, they actually have a in-house parts, parts room. And so that's managed in a number of ways. And we've evaluated a couple of options, but that's something we're going to have to look at. Over the last year, year and a half, it's been really challenging trying to obtain parts and materials. And some of the things that you would not think would be an issue are major issues right now. Oil filters, you know, we have some for certain trucks that are on national back orders. We have items that we're trying to order, they're 28 weeks out. It's really difficult to shut down a piece of equipment for 28 weeks while you're waiting for this. So that, that's a, that's a pretty high priority item for us. And again, there's a number of options we can take. Each one of those comes with a number of pros and cons that we'll be evaluating and, and moving forward in the, in the system. So item five here. The maintenance and repair work order data capture, that's something we've really been working on to try and improve. And so we're to a point now, we need to, to actually get some practices and policies in place. And those practices and policies are also going to be in owner's manual. So as we are leaving, the next group that's coming in will have, you know, an operator's manual. How we do what we do, why we do what we do, all the way from data capture to budgeting to fleet replacement, everything will be in there. Not to say it won't make changes, but the next person will have something to work off of. That's a real big component to training because as we see new techs coming in and out. You guys probably weren't in some of our customer service training, but I did recognize the fact that we are terrible at pass it along. And so you train me, I train him, he trains them, that ever works out super great. So that'll be a big component to making sure we maintain the level of service and professionalism we want in our shop. And so the last one is the development, implement, maintenance and repair management policies and procedures. Again, defining how we do, what we do, why we do, and moving that along to, to align with best practices. This is very early and we have a lot of work to do. Ultimately, we'd really like to be one of the top 10 fleets in the nation. Tempe, Buckeye, there's a handful of, of fleets in our state that have, have held high ranks in municipal fleets. And we'd like to be there. That's going to be a, a long road. We know that, but we got to start somewhere. Next slide, please. Perfect. All right. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Paul might be able to if we can get his connection working for us and go from there.
Thank you, Jack. Are any questions for Mr. Plante? Counselor Staley?
No, nothing.
I just wanted to say you're always very thorough, Jack.
Great, thank you. I either bore you to death or I give you enough, enough information. Either way, I guess we're.
Perfectly said.
Thank you very much. All right. You guys have a great evening. Thank you again.
Thank you, Jack, and, and good luck. I, I really appreciate, I know we all do, your dedication to making it better and better that the way we do business.
Thank you. It's a team effort.
I, I know, and it's great. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you to Mercury. Paul, I, sorry it worked out.
Sorry about the audio difficulties, everybody.
Okay. Thank you, Jack.
Great, thank you.
Okay, our second department report is on vagrancy.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Over the last couple of months, we've received a number of comments and concerns from the council, council members in the community. We've had conversations with our business community. Becky Fawson, who's here, she's, we've sat down and talked several times about the issues that we're having. And so it really made sense to have a conversation here in our public setting. And so I talked to Chief Cooper and Chief Cooper said, this is the perfect date to do it. I had no idea why he was so excited about the date. Until I found out he's on vacation and he gets to turn it over to somebody else. So it's my pleasure to introduce Joel Freed. Actually, Joel is the one that, that really deals with this and his team on a day-to-day basis. So it really, even if Chief Cooper had been here, he would have been probably assigning Joel to do the work anyway. So with that, Joel wants to walk you through kind of what we're doing as, as a city to be pro, as proactive as can. But we also want you to understand the rules that we're, that we're bound by because we get some requests from citizens and that, that may not know the rules. And so we're hoping that, that as you learn the rules, that you can share those with people that are complaining or that are concerned. Because it's not, this, as you will see, is not an easy problem to deal with. And on a day-to-day basis, you can imagine how difficult it is for our frontline police officers. So Joel?
Thank you. Mayor, Council, City Manager Foggan and the rest of the staff that are here, thank you for having me. This is a very touchy topic, vagrancy. It's changed a lot in the 21 years I've been a police officer. So I hope my presentation is educational considering the legal issues surrounding this problem. Because there are a lot of legal issues surrounding this problem. I would thought, I thought I would start by explaining the differences between homelessness and vagrancy. A vagrant is a person with, out of settled home or regular work who wanders from place to place and lives by begging. Most of these people choose to do this. Homeless is a person without a home and therefore typically moves from shelter to shelter or lives on the street, but desire some sort, sort of stable living environment. And then there's the urban survivalist. That's my term. And there, this is becoming more common. It is a person who has some sort of income, but choose to live in a vehicle or on the street as a way of life and have absolutely no desire to have a set residence. If you've seen the TV show, The Nomad, and it's, it's a real thing. What we're dealing with though in the city of Kingman is the vagrancy issue. There's some serious challenges concerning this. We used to have some amazing city ordinances that helped police officers when, before all this stuff happened. Those have all been taken away. So I want to bring the challenges, but I also want to talk about what we're doing and also what we want to do moving forward. Mojave County Jail is in our city limits. What that means is when people are arrested in Havasu and Bullhead, Fort Mojave and all those, they are dumped in our city. That is where our jail is and it's right down the road. We're also the conduit for Mojave mental health and now Southwest behavioral. Those people are brought in from different areas and are dumped in our city. Those are the issues that we have to deal with because in the past, we had a lot of resources to get these people back to where they came from. Those resources have dried up. The pandemic, the pandemic severely limited the people who we could book into jail. And that news spread very, very fast. So when you're dealing with these, with people and they're accustomed to going to jail and now they're getting a piece of paper, it spread quick. They knew they weren't going to jail for these issues. And honestly, most of them have some sort of mental illness or some sort of addiction, substance abuse addiction, and they could care less about the paper that you're giving them. In the past, we've actually, we, when we had services, we would move these people, they would come here. We would get them services and get them back to the communities that they came from, only for them not to take care of their legal obligations, have a warrant and then brought back to our community. And that dried up a lot of our resources. We have a mild climate, a very mild climate. When you think about people in Bullhead and what's going there, it's extreme heat. Flagstaff is extreme cold. We are very mild. We also have Interstate 40, Highway 93, State Route 68 and Highway 66 converging in our city limits. There are four people currently in this town that were brought to this town because they were broken down on the highway and we're the closest town. They are now part of our, they're trying to get to Tennessee. They're doing everything we can, or everything they can to move. But they've been here for a very long time because we're repository when you have these four main arteries coming into our town. The lack of mental health resources and those that we do have are almost always, always at capacity. Like I said, most of the vagrant population has some, some sort of mental illness. The lack of housing for homeless people in our city, it is bad. The housing we do have is almost always at capacity to the point where they're actually trespassing people from their properties. Where this was, you know, they would accept everybody that they could because of abnormal behavior or upsetting behavior. They're restricting these people and we're actually trespassing them from the availability that we have. There's also strict requirements for those. You have to have an ID, a valid ID to get in. A lot of these people do not. And you cannot be on any form of alcohol or any kind of substance when you're admitted. And a lot of these people are. But those are restrictions and then, and they put those in place to keep the other residents safe. Our, the cornerstone mission does an excellent job. They are helping people get jobs and helping them, but it's a limited quantity that they can take in. The loss of community services to assist people in getting back to where they are from or where they are ultimately going. 20 years ago, it was a lot better, but those resources have dried up. We have churches that want to help, but they are afraid of the people coming into the churches. They actually contacted us. There's three churches that wants the Kingman Policeman Department to be the repository for this money. We cannot do that. There has to be some civic organization out there that can do this. Because there are resources out there. We have a very caring and compassionate community and sometimes that, that's to our fault. But these people want to help, but there's no avenue for them to go down to allow the help. Another one is the police not being contacted directly when there are issues with vagrancy. In just a minute, I'm going to tell you the biggest hiccup that we have concerning the law and it pertains to public property. This came out of the Ninth Circuit. But when there are issues on private property, those are the areas that we can take action upon. Public property, that is a completely different ballgame. With the private property, we get out and talk to the property owner and say, hey, this is going on. Would you like prosecution for this? They can be, they can do this. We have another step that the Kingman Police Department is currently doing. And I'll get into that later, but the private property owners are the ones that are, that give us all the teeth that we have now. The Department of Justice investigating cities such as Phoenix. And I know people saw that the DOJ was going to Phoenix, but they didn't read all seven reasons they're going to Phoenix. They're look, looking at whether or not police are engaging in discriminatory policing, whether police are unlawfully seizing or disposing of the belongings of individuals experiencing homelessness. That is occurring in Phoenix right now. There's a DOJ investigator down there for it. The biggest being the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals case, Martin versus the City of Boise, which was in September of 2018. The ruling declared in the nine states covered by the Ninth Circuit, we're in it unfortunately, that the that the cruel and unusual punishments clause of the Eighth Amendment precluded the enforcement of a statute prohibiting sleeping outside against homeless individuals with no access to an alternate shelter. The court held that as long as there's no option of sleeping indoors, the government cannot criminalize indigent homeless people for sleeping outdoors on public property. That includes sidewalks. We are restricted in that. Amy and I had a conversation with Manager Foggan, and I told him, I said, "You look out your window right there at that patch of grass, and somebody's sleeping on that. There is nothing we can do about that. That is public property." So it goes on. The other case law that is held is the First Amendment protecting the holding of a sign as freedom of speech, as well as the Fifth Amendment, which protects homeless people from being persecuted, as they can be deprived of their life, liberty, and property. To note, the United States Supreme Court did not, they refused to hear this hearing in 2019, so they let this stand. They refused to even go near it. The decision ultimately made three city ordinances concerning loitering, panhandling, and camping in the city completely unenforceable, and severely hampered law enforcement's ability to address these issues. Like I said, it did not take long for people to realize that this was going on. It's actually shocking how fast that information went through the city, and how many people know that they can go sleep on that sidewalk, and they know they're aliyali oxen free. It's shocking. What we're currently doing, oh, another thing is the acceptance of certain bookings. So when the jail, when they went into pandemic mode, and they were having to test every single person who came in and quarantined, they severely limited who could be booked into jail. Fortunately, Lieutenant Zach and myself, we have a great working relationship with the captain of the jail, and when there's a repeat offender, we can actually get them into jail, but for those offenses, they can't. I mean, their facility's only so big, they only have so much manpower, it was a severe restriction. So some of the stuff that we're currently doing, we're doing fair and consistent enforcement concerning the laws that are able to enforce, primarily on private property. The medians that belong to A dot, the, any A dot property, we are allowed to enforce on that. It's the public property issues that we're having to deal with. We have a proactive approach when possible for patrol and neighborhood service officers, who are actively seeking out the issues to be resolved. I'll talk about one of those in a minute, which was extraordinary, and it's in the future plans for the city, I believe this is something that we should do. We have a trespass book. Back in 2005, it was an actual binder. Fortunately, we're going to a new computer RMS system, where this is all gonna be in our system. Right now, the current system that we have loses stuff, so we can put something in there, and it can completely disappear. But what the trespass book, in its original tent, and the new digital one, which will be even better, was, it was an actual book that you could look through, and if it was private property, we got ahold of the property owner, and they actually signed a sheet that said, "Any illegal activity on my property, I approve prosecution for that." So we took that sheet out of the binder, made a copy of it, and put it in our case report. That's what's giving us the teeth that we're doing. But it's also on a case-by-case basis. We don't have enough personnel to go to each individual business and say, "Hey, can you sign this?" Like I said, we also live in a compassionate community, where people will not prosecute for these things, even on private property. But that's one of the things that we're doing, but thankfully for the new report-writing system, this is gonna make it a little bit easier. We're also working with the City Attorney's Office concerning city ordinance ideas and composition. The camping one, other cities are going straight to what the Ninth Circuit said, and they're saying, if it was exhausted that this person was found, that they could sleep in a different spot, then prosecution can be forthcoming. Well, that's a very difficult thing, to actually make sure you go down the checklist to say, "This person had no place to sleep, so I can arrest them for camping." And we're working with other city departments in the cleanup of camps. The example that I'd like to give of that, and I know it was shared, Lieutenant Zach came back from Northwestern, and he should be congratulated that he did an amazing job in Northwestern, but noticed the culverts north of Safeway between there and the fire station was completely filled. So normally, that would take a significant amount of time and effort. Public Works, sanitation, Street Department, Parks and Rec, Police Department, private business owners actually came in, we had that completely cleaned out in two hours. I mean, that's an amazing thing, but that's how our city works together, we work together amazing. Other examples of that is the Mahavi Wash Project. This occurred four or five years ago, where they actually went in and complete, completely cleared that wash from Beverly to Airway. If you go, and I drove past there today, there are 10-foot trees in there, and this was just done recently. So they went in, knocked all that stuff out, put the appropriate signage up, that this was city property, and trespassing was illegal, and you'd be prosecuted for that. But when you look through there now, you can just spot the places where people can camp, and nobody will ever see them. It's one of the things as well, when, with a pandemic, we used to have work crews from the prison that would come out and help and assist with this. Well, now we're taxed with, this has to be city employees doing this, or it has to be a civic group or a community group doing this. Moving forward, there is no resource guide currently available for assisting people in the city of Kingman. We used to have one, where you could go down the list, okay, I need, they need this thing, and it no longer exists. This is something that I've been working on, I've worked with, with the opioid stuff, with the mental health portion of that, and I'm getting the resources that I have from them, and I'm compiling this, basically pamphlet, so I can give to my police officers, say, "Hey, if this is occurring, this is what you need to do." But we currently don't have that. Also, vagrancy and homeless issues are not a law enforcement problem. They're a city and a community problem, and the only way that we're gonna defeat that is by taking that approach. Getting people involved, whether it be, you know, the private property owners taking a stance, "We're not gonna allow this," or coming together as resources, so we have this opportunity to assist people that are actually generally looking for help. Another option, and I put this out to Lieutenant Zach and my awesome patrol sergeants, is the SEPTED concept, which is Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. That's what they did in the Mahavi Wash, they went in there and cleared out all that stuff, so they could, there was no hiding spot for them. Well, I asked them, in a sergeant's meeting months ago, if they could identify the locations that we can go in and clean these places out. We have multiple. I mean, if you look at the wash just north, or just east of Calicoes, that is completely overgrown. In my opinion, that's a safety issue. When you, when you have those issues, and everybody loves trees, I love trees, but you can cut them up high enough that people cannot hide underneath them. We have multiple areas that, we have business owners who are willing to, you know, allow us to go in and move this debris, but we don't have the people to do it. But going forward, we've identified those places. Also, we have to, we have to partnership with our community members, with the civic groups, the churches of communities, because that's where we're gonna get our teeth for any of this. All of our resources and all of our ability to actually deal with the laws that have been handed to us are gonna come from them. But it takes some work there, and I'll be open to any ideas that anybody has, because this is an issue that unfortunately is not gonna go away. Thankfully, we're not having the same issues that our neighbor to the west is having concerning this, but the issues are bad enough. But I'll entertain any questions that anybody has concerning those laws.
I have heard from a number of our residents about concerns, about profanity, about potential threats, and sometimes physical harm from someone, from some of, some of the people that are on the streets, that, could you address that, and how that is handled, or how that should be handled by community members?
Absolutely. We do have one statute that kinda held, and it's the aggressive panhandling statute. If you go into our city codes and ordinances, which I did again today, it, camping and loitering, and is completely gone, but the aggressive panhandling is. When I saw this in the, in the report that Mr. Foggan put out last week, that the chief, like circled for me and said, "I'm going to Washington," I actually looked it up. We don't have reports of that. We need, we need to be reported to immediately upon this happening, because if they're on private property, we can go get that. We can go in there and take care of that. If it's the train of, it goes to somebody, to somebody else, to somebody else, and they say, "Okay, I'm gonna call a patrol officer," the opportunity to catch that person is now, the time span has grown. So immediate, any person who's having those kind of contacts, they need to contact us immediately, because that's the only way that we're gonna solve it. I mean, we get there, and the person is completely gone. It's actually quite interesting, I come downtown every morning, every morning when I check on, I make my loop of all the, all the government buildings down here, and to see people, where they pop up from, blows my mind, because I go in there and look, I'm like, "Where'd they come from?" But there's so many spots, and these people go right back to those spots, and it's a search party to find them. So immediate contact at the police department. And our officers are out there looking, but if we're not contacted, there's not a whole bunch we can do about it, if it's not immediate.
You talked about the environmental approach. Now, is that something that we're educating private property owners about, that, that they might want to consider changing some of the landscape or the design?
Yes, ma'am. We give talks throughout the community, all throughout the year, and the topic is ever-changing. You know, some will be fraud and forgery, because we have an elderly population here, or scams, or that. But a lot of the business groups that we go out and talk to, they wanna know about the crime prevention through environmental design, and we actually have people certified in that, and it goes down to actual residents in their homes, you know, cut the foliage away from your windows, you know, put a rosebush in front of your window opposed to shrubbery, and those things, but it's an elaborate thing. But with SEPTED, we can use that as a city for everything that we hope to accomplish, at least make it more difficult. And that's the thing, if we're bound by the law that we can only do certain things, making it inconvenient or more difficult is one of the avenues that we definitely have to pursue in that.
Any other questions?
I had some comments, and maybe some help for you. I attended the League of Cities and Towns earlier, last month, and one of the breakout sessions that I attended spoke about this particular topic. Flagstaff was represented, Tucson was represented. They had some great ideas on putting together a roundtable of, like you said, I liked when you mentioned all the resources, because what happens is, when those resources get together, they can brainstorm and find solutions. This particular resource may have an overabundance, this one's struggling, you know, so I, I really would like to encourage something to be started as far as a roundtable of resources, so you can share resource information in real time.
Absolutely. And when I made the comment earlier that the vagrancy is not a complete law enforcement issue, we're only a small portion of it. We're the end that is dealing with the people who are committing crimes. That issues, you know, if there are no people, the vagrant portion of that, if there are none of those people committing crimes, if they're doing everything by what that, they're still gonna be here. Those people still need help, but we're not the avenue to help them for that. We're the avenue that enforces the law portion of that. And it's an educated population when it comes to this stuff, on what they know they can do and what they can't do. And one of the, but I completely agree with you, and I would be willing, I wouldn't even go on vacation when that occurred, I would be part of that roundtable.
I'd be willing to help you with that, because I really feel like it's, it needs to be a meeting of the minds, you know? Maybe we can help these people, you know, give them a hand up, you know, and maybe find different opportunities for them within our community, where they can be, you know, good citizens in our community and giving back. So I know that the Chamber of Commerce would probably get on board with that, and several charities, civic organizations, so I would like to work with you on that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
And I would just add to that, that as part of that, it can build on the continuum of care community, which meets like monthly, or I think it's monthly, maybe quarterly, to discuss resource issues for homeless and others in our community, and the community development at the county hosts that. And I know that organizations like Catholic Charities that just helped in Bullhead with the homeless shelter there, which I've talked to them and said, "Kingman's next, you know, please work with us." But again, you're right, it takes a group effort and a partnership to get those things done. Also, the community, the Health Coalition had this discussion about mental health and other things, and started this resource, just brainstorming, what are the resources? So there are a lot of agencies, and private sector and public sector, that could, could come together on this. Even our Veterans Court was doing a resource guide that they give to the jail and others, here's where some help is. And I noticed this past week, when I went down to Chilling on Bill, WACOG has a stand out there, resource guide. Everybody's got pieces.
Well, and I agree with you, Mayor, it was amazing. When I was first hired, they gave me a laminated card that came from a civic organization that said, "These are the resources that are available." So, you know, you help somebody, and you just go down the list, okay, it applies there. That no longer exists. Some of those people, some of those businesses and entities no longer exist. But I know that in our community, we have a caring and compassionate community that's out there, we just have to bring it together.
Is there a, what was it, 211? It's not a 911, it's like, it's like a helpline to find out what resources are. It used to be a state-level thing. So, you know, even an organization like that could connect with a roundtable or whatever, to make sure that people can access it one place. That seems very needed, again, if it's not out there.
Right. And a lot of people didn't know about the laws that came out of the Ninth Circuit.
I'm glad to hear that.
They thought, "Well, why aren't you doing something about this?" And we educate people on a daily basis, because it's, that law was taken away from us. We can no longer enforce that. And, you know, it's, on one hand, it's tragic, but when you see, and I completely agree, it's not against the law to be homeless. I completely agree with that, and criminalizing it is a horrible thing, but when you, when you're trying to improve a place, I can see where that's needed, so.
Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions, if I could.
Go ahead, Counsel.
Sure. So my, my first question is probably maybe for Manager Foggan, how we could proceed forward with putting like an annual roundtable, if the city could host it, and then getting not only that list of resources that Joel was talking about, but also identifying community needs, so that we can sort of start working towards checking off some of those boxes, and having a more organized effort, and a community effort, working on this homelessness problem, because I think anybody could tell you they've noticed an uptick, they've noticed more people around town. It used to be like you really knew who the homeless people were, and the whole community came to support them, but it almost feels like there's, there's more people than you, you know, you can take care of anymore, and, and so I agree with Church. I think that roundtable is a fantastic idea.
And I would say, I totally agree, and yes, we can absolutely look at putting that together.
That's, that's fantastic. My, and I have one other question, is about people living in RVs, because that's something, even lately, I've been seeing complaints about it in the minor, online, that we have these RVs all over with people living in, but they're not in an RV park or designated area. They're either in parking lots, or they're in people's yards, that kind of thing. What, what are we doing about that?
Well, one of the things that we had to actually confront when it came to that, it was Walmart's corporate policy that you could sleep in their parking lot. So when we enacted, and I know Mr. Cooper knows about this, when we enacted the law in Kingman that there was no camping in the city limits, we actually had to go in there, and they did, it was pure pushback from them. So when it comes to them sleeping on private property, we had, we just have to approach the private property owner to see if they want them to move along. If you drive up Wallapai Mountain Road, right at Devil's Dip, at the cattle garden, you look left, you see a bunch of motorhomes out there. That is a lifestyle now, the national forests, anybody who goes camping, I know Mr. Walker goes camping up in the Williams area, you go up there, and those people are not visiting, they are living up there. And unfortunately, it comes down to enforcing that, is getting the private property wanting to move along, and generally, if they want them trespassed from their property, we give them a warning, and we trespass them, and we ask them to move along, and then it becomes a shell game on which property they're gonna go to next, or, and they know the laws concerning that as well. I know somebody personally, I've dealt with him in law enforcement since 2003, he knows all the laws when it comes to federal land use, and where he can move, and how far he has to go for these things. So, I mean, those people are educated in that, but we move them along as best as we can. And it comes down to the property owner, the private property owner, wanting to do that.
Okay, thank you. I don't- I don't, you know, I've noticed, like I was in the Big Lots parking lot, and it was after dark, and I don't know why, maybe I've just seen too many scary movies, but it just seemed so unsafe, you know, to kind of walk by that area. There's all these, you know, people living in their RVs. I guess maybe that's just me, and that's, but that is what other people are complaining about.
Absolutely, and I agree. And our patrol personnel are out there contacting. When we were able to actually change Walmart's opinion on that, I know my squad was working that night, and I know Lieutenant Zach's squad was working shortly thereafter, and we were contacting 40 to 50 motorhomes a night, telling them they had to move along.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, and thanks for all you guys do to help keep us safe.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anything else? Appreciate the report and everything that you're doing, and I think the idea to have a community forum on this is great.
We greatly appreciate all the support that we have from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is our announcements by Mayor, Council members, and City Manager. Manager Foggan?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items. We have the Anti-Divine Day Parade this Saturday, and we have got a great ride for all of you with great banners, and we're going to have the city flag and American flag. And so if you're available, we hope that we can have a large number of the council there. It is going to be, they're asking you to go to First and Beale by 9:30, and we, the parade will leave from there. So it should be a nice day, and if you're 15 minutes later or so, don't panic, we'd be happy to take you as soon as you can get there. But we would love to invite the council to be part of the parade. It's a longstanding tradition. We didn't get to have it last year, so it's wonderful that it's back. So we're excited about the Anti-Divine Parade. The other thing, just want to remind you, tomorrow night is the 100-year celebration for the Fire Department. They've put together some really great demonstrations, and to be able to show off at Station Number Two, or 22. And that event is an open house from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. There is a 6 o'clock little awards ceremony that if you're thinking about attending, it would be wonderful that you were there about that time so that they can recognize you and also so you can be part of that program. Not required, of course, anytime between 5:00 and 9:00, but there is a 6 o'clock program. And those are the two things that I have for council.
Thank you so much. Counsel Staley?
Nothing this evening.
Counsel Walker? Counsel Samley?
I do have a couple of things. So I attended District One Supervisor Ling and Felter's Housing Roundtable. Again, another roundtable to talk about workforce housing as well as affordable housing, so I appreciate him championing that effort. I also attended the Veterans' Graduation, Veterans' Court Graduation, and wow. Kudos to Judge Singer on all his staff for the good that the program's doing for our community. They had one graduate in that program that started when the program was initiated.
Oh, my goodness.
And he just graduated, but he graduated. So that was, that was the goal, and he accomplished it, and what a fine young man. So I appreciated the invitation, and I will go again. That was very moving, so, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Mello, Vice Mayor? Just a couple of things. I attended the Mojave County Water Authority meeting. Basically, the discussion now, as I think everyone knows, the real issues there usually address the river city communities because it's Colorado River water, but Kingman is very engaged with that and does, we sign the checks, we do the finance. But the big discussion now is what's the impact of the Tier One water shortage that will, is about to take place. But that discussion was important and was also reinforced by the Governor's Water Augmentation and Sustainability Committee, which I attended just as a listener. But again, their first order of business was what's happening on the Colorado River. And so these things will come out and be reported, or they already are, but I was consoled, if you will, because at least at Tier One, it appeared that the impact on contract users of the river water would be, would not be real impactful because of the way that the drought contingency plan was made. But that does not change the urgency or the immediacy, because Tier Two and Tier Three follow behind. And so it reinforces the need for conservation. But also, the discussion came up about Representative Cobb's legislation, which is going to take, she's going to take back to the legislature this next session. And it was a really good opportunity for advocacy, which I did, on supporting that legislation, because we really need that rural management area. And it was good that Kingman was participating, because there are members of that authority that thought it was going to affect, you know, them on the river, but we were able to reinforce this is about groundwater, this is not about the river water, and this isn't even a regulatory agency, it's a recommending body more than that. So that was some good meetings. I did want to mention that when I listen to these sustainability meetings, they want us to reinforce that, that some people are panicking about, "Well, there's a drought and we're going into this shortage." But the state, I'm always impressed by the partnerships and the things that are going on to address short and long-term sustainability, because there's so many people in this state that are working on it and working together on it. And there's always something to learn new, but the thing that might impact us is the emphasis that they're doing on sustainability, on desalination of brackish water, which for us and our aquifers someday may be long-term, of course, that could be something of a discussion. So the other thing I'll mention is, we had a visit today from Karen Robson. She announced her candidacy for governor yesterday, and she is, I actually have spoken with her several times, but met her when we were at the League of Cities and Towns, and really invited her to come to Kingman. I told her, "There's so many exciting things happening here." Well, she came today, and I want to give kudos to our ED team, to Director Kellogg, to Bennett Bradley and Doug, our airport manager. And I couldn't take the tour this time, but I'm sure that downtown, they were able to talk to Josh. But Manager Foggan, thank you for taking that on and creating a tour that in about an hour and a half or two hours, she was able to really get a glimpse of what is happening here in terms of our visioning for the future and how we're implementing it both at the industrial park, with our infrastructure, and with the downtown. And she is a very, I think she'll be a strong candidate. She has a long history of working, I guess, in development and law, so it'll be interesting to see how things go. But I love it, because she has been very instrumental in development in Arizona and even other states, and she was unaware of how much potential and how many things we had happening here. And I will say this, Counsel Samley, at the end she said, "I like your achieves 60 button." And I didn't even realize that I was wearing my, this is a statewide group, but in Kingman, Counselor Samley is leading that group, but we have these pins. And I said, "Well, it matches the coat real well, but I like the pin, too." Anyway, so that was very good today, and I again want to thank the staff for doing such a nice job of showcasing our community. And that's really all I have for right now.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I failed.
You failed, okay.
A little bird, I thought I'd done really great, and a little bird reminded me that I'd failed.
Oh, why did you fail it?
So as part of the parade, the mayor hosts a dignitary luncheon after the parade.
Ah, yes.
And so just want to make sure that the council knows that that luncheon occurs after the parade and you were all.
It's right here. Normally, it's right in here.
Yeah, and it will be again.
And it's called the Mayor's Luncheon? And I'll just be frank, I do nothing except rely on, rely on our wonderful city clerk and everybody that you're working with. I guess it's magic. You show up and there's food.
It is magic, and we would love you to come enjoy the magic.
So there. Okay. Now we go to council requests for future reports and updates. Are there any? Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.